So we'll call the meeting to order. I'm trying to look at my other copies here. So we're going to, if you have verbal comment on the meeting, the Zoom number is on the agenda, but it's 669-900-9128, webinar number 949, 17624239, passcode 085625. Look, it's on the website. Verbal comments must be limited to no more than three minutes. Public comments submitted are part of the official meeting record. The meeting is being held in compliance with the Governor's executive order. We'll call the meeting to order, and City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmembers, Commissioners Carrillo.
Present.
Loa.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Fauci.
Here.
And Mayor Hoffler.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We have public comments, now's the time for public participation.
Do I need to question or excuse me, second court? No, she's here.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Second, excuse me, second court.
Okay, sir, a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, a motion, a second. City Clerk? We'll call a question.
Councilmember Commissioners Carrillo.
Yes.
Loa.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Fauci.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk and IT, do we have any public comments queued up?
No public comments, ma'am.
No? Okay, thank you, City Manager. Sometimes, I don't know who sometimes has the, who's got the, the... Perfect. All right, so City Attorney, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. The items to be discussed in closed session are those items listed on the agenda and nothing further.
All right, excellent. We will go with closed session, and let me see. Yeah, that's it, so we're going to close...
Okay, so we're reconvening. We had discussion with the city attorneys on some legal matters. And city attorney, you want to go ahead and report out on it, sir?
Thank you, your honor. All members of the council were present with the exception of Mayor Pro Tem Betancourt and able to participate in all matters. As item 4.1, existing litigation, C D Communities versus AVEC, councils provided an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 4.2, existing litigation, C D A versus Palmdale, councils provided an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. That concludes my report. Thank you, your honor.
Excellent. Thank you. That was informative as usual. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn the closed session meeting. We'll call to order the 7:00 PM City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Palmdale Airport Authority, Palmdale Civic Authority, and Palmdale Financing Authority. And we'll do a pledge of allegiance. This is our ranking officer here. You? And you are...
Captain Sergio.
Captain, can I ask you to come forward and lead us in the pledge? And what we'll do is have a moment of silence in memory of our lost responders and our troops.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that the city clerk please record also that we're going to adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of LA County firefighter, firefighter specialist Carlin. He just had a very nice flag ceremony for him in his memory today. Okay, thank you, Captain. So we'll do item number nine, roll call, please, city clerk.
Council members, directors, members, Commissioner Carrillo.
Here.
Loa.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Commissioners Brown.
Here.
And Froggins Haines.
Here.
And Mayor Hoffauer.
Here. We have a quorum. Item number 10, city manager, can you help us with this?
Sure, mayor. It'd be an honor. Maybe two months ago, the mayor and I were invited to come out to see some of the trainees and go to the local army recruiting station. We got to meet with the captain and all the regional recruiters.
Who wasn't dressed as nice.
Well, it's a big deal. So we're here to celebrate the army's birthday. And June 14th is the army's birthday. They have a cake. I would probably, if, do you want to read the proclamation? Would you like me to read the proclamation?
Why don't we bring the captain up?
Okay.
And come down here.
And then probably ask all council to probably go to the back. We'll, I think we're going to cut the cake in the back. And if you guys would join us, but we'll read the proclamation. We'll do the formal proclamation. There'll be no fighting. I know I'm Air Force, but I better not here. Wear any army cake, I can tell you that. Do you want me to read it, mayor?
Go ahead, yeah.
Whereas the US Army was founded on June 14th, 1775, when the Continental Army was formed to defend our nation and its citizens. And whereas the United States Army has protected us in times of peace and in times of conflict to preserve democracy and defend freedom. And whereas the motto, "This Will Defend," signifies the army's constant readiness to defend and preserve the United States. And whereas the men and women who serve proudly as soldiers of the United States Army and their families who support, who support them make great sacrifices to defend our freedoms. And whereas the city of Palmdale remains committed to honoring all service members by ensuring they are treated with the utmost respect and dignity. Whereas today, we celebrate the continued strength, professionalism, and bravery of our soldiers in the all-volunteer force and observe June 14th as the birthday of the United States Army. Hooah! That's not in there. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby recognize June 14th, 2021, as the birthday of the United States Army. Sign is 15th day of June 2021.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so we're going to have to, let's see, why don't we, can we do it on this side? Because I already got them sitting here. Okay.
Captain, you want to come on over here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You guys want to come down?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay, great, yeah. Sometimes you stand behind, I don't know, I'm just here. I gotta tell you, I was really impressed the day that you guys invited us out there and all your crew and everything and the young, young...
Come on in, Austin.
We're here, Captain. Are you good?
Yep.
So we have two future soldiers, so they are from here in Palmdale. They've committed to serve in the US Army. So they're getting prepared to ship out. Actually, if you'd stand. This is Ms.
You young recruits, seriously, carry those city coins with you, put them in your pack. Take them on a trip. So, thank you. There you go.
We would like a letter from your first duty assignment. You know, to the mayor, that would be nice.
With a picture of you holding our city coin. All right. We'll sit, we'll go back on the record and done with the presentations, I need a wee, excuse me, I need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances, please.
So moved.
Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second? Is that Chris Fragassans? Okay. All right, City Clerk? Roll call, roll on that.
Council members, directors, Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Fragassans?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we got public comments. So if you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand. If you're on a personal computer, click that raise your hand button, you'll be doing another zoom, you know how that works. If you do a star six, you unmute yourself when you're called, state your name, begin speaking as a maximum of three minutes, you don't need to use it all. IT, have we got anybody on yours?
Not at this time, man.
City Clerk and City Manager?
We have one, Chad Thomas.
Okay. Mr. Thomas? Welcome. Oh, by the way, this is our Public Works guys, they've been out there working like crazy and helping with a lot of special projects, as we like to call them, this last week. So, thank you very much for your hard work, guys.
First off, I want to apologize for being nervous, I'm not real good at public speaking, so good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Beck. My name is Chad Thomas, I'm the foreman for the city of Palmdale's Street Maintenance Section. I've been employed with the city for 29 years. I'm also the Teamsters Chief Stuart for the city's maintenance employees. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all for your hard work and your commitment supporting the city employees in the community of Palmdale. I'm here to speak on behalf of supporting in favor of Agenda Item 15.3. I just wanted to elaborate that during the past six months in union bargaining, the union bargaining team and the city administration's bargaining team have established an outstanding working partnership. We were successful at reaching agreements that worked out for both sides. I also wanted to extend a special thank you to Mr. Murphy, the city manager. Mr. Murphy's commitment to a great, to be, his commitment to be a great listener as well as his transparency and his forthcoming's have been greatly appreciated during negotiations. He genuinely cares for the success of the organization and treats employees as significant assets to the city of Palmdale family. I have experienced a handful of different city managers over the course of my 29 years here. And Mr. Murphy has proven to be one of the best leaders that we've had so far here, since I've been working here. We all take pride in working for the city of Palmdale and we will continue to strive to provide the citizens of Palmdale with an excellent level of service. Again, I want to thank you for your time and your support.
Thanks, Chad. We appreciate what you guys do. Seriously.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? IT? Nothing? We good? We good? Okay, so we'll close the public comments at this time and we'll move on to
Let's say something on this item on comments. I just want to say thank you to staff in general and administration. It is unusual to have these type of agreements a hundred percent approval from the members. I am part of these negotiations in other places as well and it is unusual to see this type of agreements where there is 100% agreement and where it benefits both sides. And I believe that the ones that benefit the most is our residents because our employees will provide the services that they provide citywide with pride and with the comfort of knowing that administration cares for them. And I just want to express my gratitude to both sides, to the employee side and the administration side in these negotiations. So, good job everybody. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah, well, I've been at both sides of that table, guys, so I know neither side gets easy, so the team was, was great. So, was there any other comment, public comment?
There was no other public comment, but can I just?
Yes, sir. Please.
I appreciate Chad, your comments and the dialogue that we had with the bargain members and also all the members when they've given feedback. And I acknowledge that we have built a great relationship, but we build it with hopefully a transparent and the team approach, right? So, on our side of the table to have, you know, Bruce and Chuck involved was instrumental and Patricia, Marie and Mike and Garrett. It allowed us all to hear what each side, you know, and one person might hear it one way, but when we brought that together, so, you know, I want to also, you know, commend the team. And I don't have every member on your team, right? But this council should know, I've negotiated, I think, eight other union agreements. And I said this to the men, I've never been presented a list as long as they presented of items of concern and a lot of them were safety and caring for their fellow employees and you know, I don't take that lightly. I don't take your comments lightly, Chad, I appreciate it and I appreciate the team that we have here that, we had our own arm wrestling matches. You know, and everybody came with this final agreement with creative ideas to get to the end goal. And I think the end goal is taking care of one another. So I say that we sit on different sides of the table, but we sit there as one team. And when we went there and we were transparent and shared what really mattered to you and what really mattered to us. It ended up being one of the easier negotiations despite the long list because we were honest with each other. So, I appreciate that.
And as was said, it's our residents that end up benefiting from a good, solid workforce that's happy, the management side that's happy, and then the residents are happy. Because quite frankly, it's the blue shirts and the orange shirts and Kerry's team and the in the red shirts and Mike's team out there and you guys got all kinds of shirts. And, you know, that really, you know, make it easier on us, you know, so again, I just, you know, Richard, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I did. I was going to pull this item to make a statement and I want to echo whatever everyone has said and Chad, you made a great presentation. If you were nervous, it wasn't apparent. So, that was good. But I think through this COVID crisis, you guys really demonstrated your commitment and devotion to serving this community. And I am sure that it is well appreciated what you did because it was risky. You put your health on the line. I understand that some of the guys might have gotten sick with the virus. Luckily, no one got very, very sick. But knowing that risk, you went out there and you did your thing for our people. And I really want to commend you. I think this is a reflection of our appreciation. It was hard fought. As I understand the negotiations went, there were points that were made on behalf of the workers and points that were made on behalf of the administration and you reached a balance. But the most important thing is how deeply we appreciate what you did during this last year during this crisis. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you want to add anything? So, Mr. Bishop, can I add something?
Well, yeah, I got to follow that now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. What they said. But even to echo that even more is that I'm very happy that both sides were able to come together. We were able to get full support from that, that part of the staff. You guys truly deserve every penny of it because what you do is hard labor, it's backbreaking labor, it's out there in the heat and the sun, it's not it's not easy jobs and you guys make up almost 25% of our staff. So I was happy that you guys were able to come together and unanimously get consent on this agreement because that hasn't been the case in the past. So that was long overdue and I'm glad that we're here now. So, thank you very much.
Here's one more public comment that I had received and was asked to remind everybody that June is Pride Month. We had the declaration we did here at the council meeting. And as a result, some of the Human Relations Committee members and other folks in the community are putting together Pride Walk on the 26th at 9:00 AM of this month. And they're going to start up by the mall and they're going to walk down to Albertson Shopping Center on Tier Sabida. And the Trio Coffee House is down there and they got really good coffee. So, just letting you know, you can kind of, if you want to find out more information, it's out there on the Palmdale Pride Walk on social media. But 9 o'clock out there and they're going to walk, they're going to stand aside walks, it's just a, just kind of a solidarity kind of deal to wrap up, wrap up the month. So, I was asked by one of the Human Relations, Scott Young, to read that and there you go. So, if you're not doing anything that morning, if you're not out there picking up trash in the desert, you know, come on, I'll help. So. Anyways, okay. So now we're at 13, right? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on the agenda, I don't know if we need to, excuse Ms. Mayor, Portman, Mettencourt? And for the record, I can know that we did the first session, the 6 o'clock session. Do we need to excuse Ms. Portman, Mettencourt, or this session as well, or is it 6 o'clock?
All right, well, what's the pleasure?
May I excuse her?
Yeah, we can, we can make a motion to excuse her. I was also going to ask too, if we can move up Item 15.3 because I know we have 13.1 coming up and that might be a lengthy discussion. I don't know if I want, I don't know if these ladies and gentlemen want to sit here for
Well, it's a consent calendar, so hopefully we get through it and nobody pulls anything off.
Don't we have the budget discussion?
Not, not, not until
I would join Mr. Bishop in bringing up 15.3 and approving it now.
Yeah, let's move 15 up, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we
Get them out here a little bit sooner, I know you guys have a long day.
You didn't tell me there was a different order.
Housing Authority.
Oh, that's right. All right, so, well, we'll try to get through this quickly, so we'll stop talking here. You good? And you had a motion in a second to excuse Ms. Mettencourt? Any objection?
No.
Okay, so we had that, okay. All right, so, so ordered. All right, so we're going to move to 15 for the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are enacted by one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member, in which case the items will be removed from the calendar and be considered as a separate item following this portion of the agenda. Is there a motion or a desire to pull anything else off for discussion on that?
We'll approve the consent calendar.
A motion by Mr. Loa to approve the consent calendar in its entirety, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bishop? City Clerk?
Council members, directors, members, Commissioners Carrillo?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fragassans?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 15 carries, you guys are good. All right, yeah, and thank you. We juggled the calendar, the agenda just a little bit so we could have the Housing Commission help us and then get out, so.
But you don't have to leave.
Yeah.
You can say if you want.
Take the one that runs.
Oh, they're heartbroken, look at that.
I know.
I think they might have work in the morning.
Yeah.
We're on a cupcake, so it's time to leave. Okay, number 13, Joint Public Hearing, the City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Palmdale Airport Authority, Palmdale Civic Authority, Palmdale Financing Authority. Item 13.1, staff to read the title of the joint resolution, please. Who's going to handle that part?
I will. This is a joint public hearing to adopt Resolution Number CC 2021-58, SA 2021-005, HA 2021-002, IDA 2021-001, PAA 2021-001, PCA 2021-002, and PFA 2021-002 approving the biennial operating capital improvement budget for fiscal years 2021 through 2023.
Do you want to finish where I got back? Is there going to be a PowerPoint with this?
No.
No, okay. All right, so, so we're going to do the let's see, we did that. So we'll open a public hearing. I had to just regroup for a second, I apologize. We have any public comments, IT?
No, it's not, man.
City Clerk? Do you know if he had anything queued up? No, so we're good? Okay. All right, so I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
From Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fragassans? Call and roll.
Council, council members, directors, members, Commissioners Carrillo?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioners Brown?
Here.
And Fragassans?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments? Or the recommendation is to adopt the joint resolution, CC 2021-058 on the budget, so.
I only have a question. I see that we're going to be receiving under American Rescue Funds a considerable amount of money, but 10 million of it is being budgeted every year for community sponsorship program. Which entities are going to be receiving these funds?
We plan on rolling out a grant program to the entire community where agencies and organizations can apply for grant funds. So, we're going to ask them for the name of the organization, their mission and goals, and what project they'd like to accomplish with some funding. And we'll request that they tell us the amount of money that they would like to use to complete the project.
Have commitments already been made to some organizations?
None.
Okay. What are going to be the, in other words, how are we going to keep progress on what's being done as far as these expenditures by these different organizations?
Will there be a performance metric or something like that?
So, we're going to have the applications out and they'll tell us exactly what project they want to complete. No different than when we propose CIP projects here with the city. We'll help each of the organizations go through the grant application and city staff will be the ones overseeing the entire program from evaluation to award. And then when they're done, we'll ask for pictures for proof and then the impact that their project will have completed for the community.
Yeah, I've seen, not here necessarily in Palmdale, but in other places where projects of this this kind where we're dispersing basically federal taxpayer money. And there's abuses. I just want to make sure, first of all, I think that the programs are fabulous in terms of getting this money out to the community and organizations are one of the best ways to do it. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that there's protocols in place that will assure that the money that is being spent is being spent properly and that is reaching our residents for their benefit.
I think he says that's the same question I was going to ask because I'm hearing rumors that some people are saying, oh, we got money coming. So, I'm glad to hear that that's merely a rumor, so.
All right, and will the council be kept abreast of who's being funded and so on?
Absolutely. We would bring forth progress reports of the name of the organizations, the amount received and for what reason for your review as well.
Okay.
Excellent.
I think that we have particularly noted that some of those organizations have already proven to be doing the job that they've been doing in helping the community throughout. Just remember some of the job that they've been doing throughout the city. Helping us with the census, helping us with the food services that they do every, every week. And they have proven to all of us that the job that they're doing is tremendously benefiting our residents. I'm glad to hear that there'll be a protocol and follow-up on how they are going to be getting these funds and that they're going to be responsible for reporting back how they are doing, what they're doing and how they're doing it. And again, just to bring that organization along, they've been very, very helpful throughout the community. And let's not forget that they were out there doing better too. Helping in, helping us in the census, which in turn helps everybody. So, but I'm glad you're asking those questions, Richard and Mayor. Because there has to be accountability, I agree with you. It's not just having the money and I've promised all of this and that. But I'm glad to hear that staff has a protocol in line and a process to make sure that these groups do what they are promising to do for our community. Thanks for asking those questions, Mayor and Richard, appreciate it.
Very good track record, but this is sort of open-ended and so, you know, I understand what you're saying and I wasn't pointing out to any organization that has a track record. But some organizations that may be coming forward that may think that this is low-lying fruit and take advantage of it.
And I think that's what generated discussion before was you get other groups out there that, there's groups out there that have been stepping up all along. Then you got other people that come in out of the shadows because they heard there's money. We want to just make sure that it's taxpayer money, it's not free money. And we want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck and that that they, you know, these groups have got the ability to make the applications. And I appreciate that you guys thought about, thought that through. Thank you.
We're going to, to Murray's point, we're going to be transparent, we're going to include the council in this conversation through the entire process. So, when we got these funds, this was an eligible expense. There are, to your point, established groups like AV Edge and Chambers and, you know, we have to do with this rescue money for small businesses what some of the programs that Economic Development did and this council did in the last year. Right? So, we're challenged with that. And then we have some nonprofits. So, but we're going to have an application process and we're going to try to outline, you know, different things. So the outcomes might be different depending on what the needs are, what the programs are. They may be mental health resources. what the programs are, they may be, uh, mental health resources, they may be animal rescue resources. I hope that this budget and this program is reflective of what staff has heard from this council since day one. That's our goal, so this is the mechanism to put that in place.
Good. Um, can we also, uh, understand that, uh, we have some, uh, increase in share funding? And to add some additional staff on this?
Uh, we, we do, I, I think Marie's gonna go through the budget, I don't wanna, I don't know where she's covering that, right? Um, but.
I can do a presentation.
Right, we ha- we have a presentation, uh, that she can do, or, you know, we listen, Mike Miller, Marie, myself, staff, um, we listen to the council for the better part of my entire tenure here, even prior as the assistant, you've been talking about additional resources in code enforcement. This budget calls for that.
Right.
You're gonna, you know, we're gonna.
That's why I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that people at home understand that, that, that this feedback we've been getting from them hasn't been falling on deaf ears.
Right.
That we've been transmitting that to you and Marie and Mike and, and, uh, and, and Kerry and all the other folks, and that they've been putting all this into the sausage machine to come up with this, you know, so.
Based on what I see here, I think staff's been very receptive into listening to our concerns and needs and, um, some of the stuff I'm really excited about is these new positions that, um, that are going out in various departments, one of them being code enforcement, I know we've only had four code enforcement officers for this entire city here. I mean, what, you can say what, one code enforcement officer per, no, that's not even per, yeah, per district. But, I mean, that's just, those guys are completely backlogged on cases and then the additional staff for those guys is definitely gonna help.
I know they're taking a cer- they're taking a certain load off the Sheriff's Department.
Exactly.
Because we called in, uh, well, I won't get into the details, but we called in an incident the other day, and they were Johnny on the spot, they were out there and they resolved it, and we didn't have to tie up a couple of deputies, we were, deputies were able to take care of cop stuff, and I think that's what it's all about, it's about leveraging your resources, so.
Yeah, yeah, and we're able to, uh, we're able to have our code guys handle these lower-level issues, uh, a lot faster, more efficiently, and probably for a lot less than a deputy would, and it leaves, uh, the deputies open to deal with the real emergencies.
Right.
So, yeah, Sheriff Contract One, I know we're working on, that's gonna be, you know, uh, always fighting, uh, increases, but it kinda is what it is. The other thing I wanted to address was, uh, the animal control services and, um, animal rescue, that kinda, that top I wanna put an emphasis on, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a sore spot, but I think it still needs to be addressed, especially while we have some of this additional funding right now. Um, I think we need to put some extra funding aside to work with some of these animal rescue groups and to address some of the kill numbers and some of the community outreach and, and what's going on with the shelters, because that's also a contract that is increasing by the year, and I think if we were to use the resources that we have now to try to be proactive, we can help combat any increasing changes in the future and also save animals while reducing the contract at the same time, you know, there's a humane element to this, there's a quality of life issue and also the animal control contract comes under public service.
It's no different than what we're doing with the deputies, we can add on a bunch of, of the civilian staff, code enforcement, NCO, CSOs, and PSOs over there under Mike's team, uh, or we can, uh, bring on more sworn deputies, uh, and, um, that, and, and, uh, a considerable, uh, difference, uh, in, in, in cost, and I, I agree with you. I mean, uh, I was sitting there in a room and I heard the, uh, animal control boss.
Yeah.
You know, telling us what she was gonna do, and, uh, so I would just encourage that as we move forward, to continue to take a look at that contract and take a look at what can we do in-house, because I just get really tired of, you know, if there's a problem, th- they don't, they, they don't call who's really supposed to be handling it. We, we get the call, and then.
Yeah.
Then he gets the call.
That's why I wanna try to make sure that we put as much funding as aside possible for some of the nonprofit groups, and one of them you even know is the, the horse rescue that you guys have been working with every weekend over at Barrel Springs, so there's a lot of rescue groups and we've seen this.
A lot of these groups are very willing to.
Oh, yeah.
Take on some of this responsibility.
Yeah, they wanna make a difference.
They wanna make a difference, these people are involved and, and I wanna make sure we're putting enough aside, uh, resources aside so we can help make that difference, and I spoke with Marie a little bit about it and hope- hopefully she can, you know, help guide me through this little bit of maybe some of the stuff we can do or some of the possibilities.
So.
I agree, I agree with you, Councilmember Bishop, I think that, uh, maybe this could be an opportunity to look at a hybrid program. Uh, I know that costs keep increasing and getting those services throughout the county, and I know that those, those groups that you mentioned are out there trying to make a positive difference. Uh, I don't know if we could look at maybe start a, a, a hybrid program? I don't know if that's something that staff can look at in the near future, uh, for us to address the issues that you're bringing up, um, to get those other nonprofits and groups that are out there trying to ma- make a positive difference. Uh, that's just an idea, maybe that's a further, uh, discussion along the way to see how a hybrid program can, can be the, uh, a way to answer, um, what, what their concerns are.
Yeah, but, yeah, but a good point, um, I didn't, uh, good point, I didn't, uh, I didn't use that term, but that's exactly what I was referring to there. Uh, so we need, uh, uh, just like we have the CSOs and the PSOs taking on stuff that a lot of times you'd have a cop having to do, same thing with being able to use these v- uh, volunteer and nonprofit, uh, animal rescue groups and stuff and some of the vets that have asked to, uh, be, be in, involved, so, good point.
So from a, from a finance standpoint, I was hoping Marie could help, and she's got experience from, from other cities, that she could help me with some of this.
So, over the past three years, we've budgeted approximately a million dollars each year for the animal control contract with LA County, and we've spent nearly all of it from eight hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand. Over the past year, we are at about six hundred thousand dollars worth, but that's with staff doing a really great job of trying to control more of the costs. This year proposed, we have five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund for LA County's animal control, plus an additional two hundred thousand dollars for a total of seven hundred thousand dollars in animal care and control. Uh, the agencies that I work for have contracted with humane societies and worked with bringing in nonprofits to provide vaccine clinics, low-cost spay and neuter, and looking for rescue organizations to help fund them to alleviate the pressure on the shelters as well. So in order to do that, I would suggest that you could look at Measure AV or rescue funding and add an additional three hundred thousand for a total of one million dollars and split that hybrid model out to look for more organizational or nonprofit assistance and not give one hundred percent of the funding to LA County. That way we can achieve the less kills and less pressure on the, um, shelters, but also help our residents get the low-cost, uh, services they need for their pets.
So is that something that, um, you want us to allocate funding or direct funding, um, adjustment, and that probably come from unappropriated reserves or something like that?
Correct.
But, or, would you rather, uh, find out what, what you think you really need and then come back with us and tell us, tell us that?
So we can do one of two, two ways, and, because with the money we allocated for nonprofits, these rescue groups would compete, and we can go out to the market to find out in our ap- application process, uh, who we can partner with to effectuate some of that change. Um, and if there's not that, um, level of interest and we had to use other funds outside of that nonprofit partnership, then I think we would come back to you and say, um, that three hundred thousand, we didn't have as many, uh, rescues in this area, but I can tell you, as, as late as, uh, eleven o'clock this morning, we met on this topic and, uh, the Simi Valley Group is willing to come up an extra day, they come up three days a week. Uh, staff has already asked them to come up four days a, like, an extra one day or two days, we've gotten a price. The problem is they don't have enough veterinarians, so they're trying to, uh, source veterinarians so they can commit to us for two days, so.
So can we, so, would it be better right now that, it sounds like you're kind of in the middle of this mix, to provide you guys that, I think you got the consensus here that we wanna see something done further and to come back, uh, with, uh, with, with some numbers, but we want a commitment that we're gonna be moving this, you know? I don't wanna sit here and say, well, we're gonna say three hundred, then you guys gotta come back and say, ah, man, it was three and a quarter, you know?
I like to move forward and just, like, make a motion, that way we can get this in the budget, so that way it does give the staff the flexibility, because if we don't, I feel like if we don't address this now while we have this open, it's, they're not gonna have the flexibility and the budget moving forward to address some of these issues.
Uh, yeah, and I'm trying to maintain that flexibility, but if, you know, um, you know, whatever relative desire of you guys wanna do here, you know, if, if you think you wanna, you wanna put a cap on it, because that's essentially what you do, when you allocate it, you put a cap on it, so, uh.
I think not limiting it would be more important, just to see at least, you know, what we can do with, as far as pilot programs and starting some of this stuff, just getting the ball going while we have it.
I agree, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to give it, what do you wanna do here, JJ, what's gonna work for you?
I think I hear loud and clear that this council wants the, besides the additional two hundred thousand that we have in the budget out of the Measure AV money, that another three hundred thousand dollars right now to see where we're at. Uh, I think, since we hear loud and clear, I'd like the flexibility to say that money could be a combination of Measure AV.
Yeah.
It could, general fund.
Did you guys figure out where you're making, where you're gonna get it from?
But let's partner with the res-.
Yeah.
But I, I, if it's gonna come out of the, the application process, then I hear that there's, this council wants at least three hundred thousand dollars additional, uh, allocated for, uh, trying to effectuate this, the problem we're having, and, and Councilman Bishop and staff have, have spent hours meeting on this, and sadly, uh, our kill rates are probably some of the highest in the county. So, I, I get the humane piece, so, as long as Councilman Bishop's happy with the additional five hundred thousand dollar commitment and giving staff the flexibility of what pot of money.
Three, one.
Well, it's total of.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Before, yeah, total five, but the additional three hundred thousand, but giving us the flexibility of figuring out what fund based on what the applications come in, so if it's a, for instance, I think if it's a veterinarian, we probably have to go the Measure AV route instead of the nonprofit application route. If it's a Simi Valley, uh, spay and neuter program, we probably can take that out of that bucket, so if, if I hear loud and clear three hundred thousand, we can make that work. Okay, I'll make a motion for that, I just, I wanna.
Separate motion on that or just provide that direction?
No, I think you, I think the direction is staff, uh.
Is, is there any objection to that?
I don't have any objection.
Alright.
I don't have an objection to, but I, I also want to express a concern, I understand and, and, and share and have compassion, you know, for our four-legged, uh, creatures and friends. But one of the main concerns I've had, and I've expressed it over quite a period of time, is mental health. And, uh, mental health is a crisis that's affecting all of our residents, and it's, uh, something that's intensified over this COVID crisis, and I know that we have an allocation of three hundred thousand for that. Um, I, I wanna make sure that we've got the resources. I know that some of the other money, it's, it's reflected in, in the sheriff's contract and is reflected in other areas that we're getting commitments to, to, uh, to address that problem. Um, and I know that there's going to be a, a kind of a liaison group that's going to be uh, leading the effort to bringing together and stitching together all of the different organizations that are addressing these, these really severe problems, but, um, I wanna keep reminding the council that that's important too, in fact, intensely important, uh, because of the way it affects human beings, so, um.
And Councilman Loa, you've been a staunch ab- advocate, other council members have, have spoken about mental health. You have, uh, led that charge in my ear, right, and that's why when we talked about the grant program that Marie men- mentioned, and, and I want everybody to know something, the grant application was drafted by, uh, Jordan Kelly, a brand-new management analyst in our organization, works for Kerry Smith, and, uh, really took this on as, as, you know, a challenge and was gonna help Marie and staff. So, we have staff, all levels of the organization committing to you, and that's why when I talked about this, I mentioned animal rescue, I mentioned mental health, because we wanna partner with the outside organizations who may not be getting funded enough to make the impact. And as I committed to you, like, we're all ready to sit down with these outside organizations, the judicial branch, the law enforcement, to, to try to get a handle. We can't fix mental health across the county, but we can then make an effort to make, make a difference in Palmdale.
That's exactly what I'm looking for, uh, to have an impact, to have, uh, so that our, uh, our residents in, in the city of Palmdale, uh, who often fall between the cracks that are created by the laws that regulate this, uh, enormous crisis, and people are, are having to endure, um, persons who are affected by mental health but don't exactly meet the criteria, say for fifty-one, fifty, or other kinds of, uh, approaches that the law provides. And that results in an ever-increasing homeless problem. It, it increases violence in the home, which is oftentimes the only way that law enforcement gets involved is because there's been a violent interaction between a person that is sick mentally, and yet the family hasn't been able to do anything about it because the resources aren't there. And I know this is a much more vast problem than what we can deal with here in this budget, but we need to at least get involved and make a commitment.
I appreciate that, Mr. Loa, and that's why, I mean, I remember last time we had full support of the council when it came to addressing the mental health and getting the additional funding, and, and to that point, I mean, animals can be considered as, as, you know, they help people too, they help, they definitely help people, and there's, there's.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing this.
No, I know, I'm just trying to, you know, bring it full circle, there's, I know plenty of families who have been in situations too where they can't necessarily wanna keep their, their vet, their family pet, but they can't because of finances or, or one thing or another, but that's where if these, these groups have the funding, they can at least help them pay for the food or board a house.
We used to get a grant to help exactly with that, for those support animals and stuff like this, and for some reason, all of a sudden that kinda went away, so.
So, so of course, it goes full circle, everything we do is in an, in an effort to help people, but I appreciate you leading the charge for that mental health thing because that is a top priority right now.
Yeah.
So I hope as you look at the budget that's been presented, you see, not just line by line, but you see the, the larger grant programs and things like that, they are gonna be.
There's any connections between.
Open the door for exactly what you've been talking to us for the better part of eighteen months plus, and, uh.
And I know that there's other tie-ins, uh, you know, like the law enforcement contract and other, uh, other resources, but I intend to keep a close eye on this, is.
We intend to make you work.
Yeah.
And join us, I mean, this is not.
I want to.
You know, th- this is not staff-driven, this has gotta be all of us in, because.
I know that the, uh, the approach by the, uh, District Attorney's Office, uh, the judicial, um, branch of, uh, the Superior Court a- addressing, uh, mental health is a resource that we can tie into, and I know that we're, we're reaching out, and I know you have, um, contacted the judge that's doing this over there, so. This is an important problem, and, um, we're doing our part, so, alright, I wanna thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and I, um, that, that kinda, uh, brings me back to why I was commenting that we're bringing in the more civilian staff to let the cops handle cop stuff, because all these things taking more time. All these issues end up taking much more time, but makes them available to be able to deal with these, these very issues that Mr. Loa's speaking about. That's a very time-consuming, uh, call to, to get out on, and, um.
Although deputies are receiving, uh, training, that makes them capable of, uh, entering situations that are sometimes fraught with danger that involve mental health approach, and they're trained to deal with that and also deal with, uh, things that are perhaps are, are more law enforcement-oriented. So they come equipped with both, and, and I commend the Sheriff's Department for doing that.
They're doing a heck of a job, man, we talk to those guys down at MET, and we know the challenges they're up against, we know the, the the challenge that they're facing with trying to bring more clinicians on board, because a handful of cities went and grabbed them all and paid them a lot of money. So we know that they've been kind of restricted there, so, um, but, uh, uh, you know, part of the reason I was commenting about the, uh, about the, uh, the civilian resources to relieve the deputies is also because, um, uh, you know, we've really gotta, we've really gotta find a way to make a dent in all the speeding and, and, uh, uh, street racing. We've really gotta find a way to make a dent in all the speeding and and uh uh street racing problem that's out there. Uh every week, I'm getting bombed, I'm having to send the city attorney over the emails and stuff, because I thought, I can't talk to you about this. And I understand, but what happened on the city streets, I can't talk to you about this. Uh but to read these emails from the families and the friends of these people, uh and especially the ones that were just driving down the street. When two of these jackasses fly down and end up broadside in a a car or a family or something like that. Uh i- it's um, we're killing a lot of people out there, and the state needs to step up and fund the C H P. Because a lot of this is out in the unincorporated economy, we thank you guys, I know you guys, every one of you guys got a ticket book, I appreciate that you guys are are using them. Uh some other people may not think so, but uh.
And Mayor, if they, yeah, I know the captain sent his uh right-hand man, but if the captain was here, and to a point that. Each of the council has made before, hopefully, it's not just letting the deputies. Do higher crime stuff, it's hopefully freeing them up to do the community engagement piece.
Right.
That they, instead of going from call to call to call, uh I know the lieutenant has had lunch with us and Marie and Mike and. And the captain, but they really wanna get into the the, you know, the preventive, to get the community engagement so that. They're out there playing basketball or skateboarding, or, you know, we might put, you might call the lieutenant up, and if uh somebody sings, maybe he'll dance, right?
No, no, and and.
Cuz it's all, it's all right.
We've read the studies, we know that um when you start dropping below about thirty-seven percent free patrol time, that's when the crime rate goes up. And the cities that have lower crime rate have got more p- free patrol time, so that's what we're hoping to be able to do, and then, not just have free patrol time. But to be able to really spend the time on the ones that the calls that are gonna make an impact, cuz sometimes we have to run. And we had the same problem in the fire department, sometimes you just gotta go, okay, there's nothing more I can do here, sometimes people just need somebody else there to kinda help get them pointed in the right direction.
So we're, so we're getting eight new code enforcement officers, right, for a total of twelve? Over time.
Over two years.
Over, uh, yeah.
Not out the gate.
Yeah, well, he wanted thirty, I said, re- relax, don't. But over, okay, but just so everybody knows.
Right.
Just so everyone knows, over time, will we be, we'll be getting twelve new code enforcement officers, which should really. Uh get that patrol out there that we're talking about and reduce the, some of the time on the deputies. So that's, that's huge, it's, overtime is three times the amount of code enforcement we have now, that's, that's big.
Do we have a motion to approve this uh joint resolution at this time?
So moved.
Do you have a motion by, was that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, just trying to.
So we're talking about the allocation of the three hundred plus the two hundred.
I think it's the whole, it's the whole thing thirteen.
Oh, the whole budget, without the presentation, okay, that's fine, I think we've already.
That's why us is never gonna do a presentation, cuz I don't want them sitting down there with their backs to it, so we're not.
No, 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 I'll second the motion.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Before you do, I just wanna comment on on the uh budget process and. I want to thank staff for what JJ said, that they have really been listening to the council. I see a lot of different programs and different things that every council member has asked for, for staff to do. From the film uh film industry, uh creating that uh outreach to have more film in Palmdale. To the uh health uh crisis that we're having, and every other program that we've been asking staff to do that. Uh I went through the, through the budget uh almost line by line, I took my time, and I had some questions, but those questions were answered by staff. And they they do make sense the way that they approached this budget, and not only that, but the first time I believe that this is a value. Budget that we're, we are being presented with, which is very beneficial for for the city and for staff. Uh I, again, I just wanna thank staff and I I want to commend JJ for, I mean, his team for listening to uh the council's. Uh direction uh on the things that we we wanna work on as as a, as a team, as a group, and it's it's spread out throughout the city. Uh there's a lot of, a lot of different capital improvement programs and um, you know, the parks and many other improvements. That will benefit our residents throughout the city, uh thanks for presenting this value and budget, uh it's a great idea. And uh again, I thank you for listening to the council direction um on what we would like to see on the budget. Uh it took a lot of work, uh like JJ says, we've been making months, we've been talking about this, and I just wanna commend you guys for. Addressing the 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 issues and concerns that every council member had throughout this process, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir, that's something we've talked about for a long time, trying to get to this point, put a lot of work in upfront and then, and here. You may even massage a few things, so, I have a motion, and a second city clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Carillo.
Yes.
Loa.
Yes.
Bishop. Commissioners Brown. And Father Sands. And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes. Alright, excellent, so at this point, we are going to adjourn the housing authority, right, we can uh. We didn't, in the juggling around here, we didn't mess something up here, did we, I'm okay? Going, going, gone, thank you, thank you for helping. Alright, and we did fifteen, so we're gonna go to sixteen, um, city clerk? Do you have a brief report on that item?
Yes.
So now you gave us an updated list cuz the other one had a typo in it?
Yes, sir, I did. Mayor and city council, uh this item before you is being brought back from the June first meeting, and it was tabled to. Give council an opportunity to select the names of their appointees, and we're just bringing it back with the list that I've provided. In the revised staff report, if you have any other questions outside of the information I've provided, I'm I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I wanna thank everybody for getting those additional names in so we could fill out that list, uh is there any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve the nominations?
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Corio has a motion?
I'll second it.
And Mr. Loa, seconds? City clerk?
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have the uh uh reappointments at a uh to the Board of Library Trustees, um. This is uh, these are two folks on it this time, we're looking at uh.
So we have Ms. Deborah Hines and Dolores Morris.
Dolores Morris.
Their appointments will be expiring on June thirtieth, and that's like, this is before you tonight, um.
Excellent, so we need to keep that library board working, so uh, anybody have any comments, or do I have a motion to approve the nominations?
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Loa?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're there.
Mr. Bishop, seconds, city clerk?
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, move into uh item number seventeen, staff to read the title of the ordinance number fifteen sixty-six, please. Who's gonna handle that?
Item fifteen sixteen is an ordinance number fifteen sixty-six, amending sections two point zero oh eight point zero five zero. Compensation and two point zero eight point zero six zero. Additional compensation for elected mayor of the Palmdale Municipal Code, increasing the compensation of the mayor and city council.
Alright, city council, anybody, uh let's see, we have uh, so we need a motion to introduce ordinance number fifteen sixty-six to have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Loa? I need a second?
I second it, Corio.
Mr. Corio, seconds, city clerk?
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we uh, IT, do you have any uh?
Not at this time.
City clerk, do you have any, anybody online for public hearing, we're gonna open a public hearing, nothing, anybody in the audience wanna address this item? C, none, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Loa?
Okay.
Mr. Bishop, city clerk, you're on again.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh so any comments, or do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty-six?
Well, I wanna make a comment, uh, uh my sense is that uh we should have had the representative that represented the Teamsters here a little while ago. Representing the city council.
Yeah, yeah, for the last, the last eleven years, you think, fourteen years, oh, I'm sorry, so.
There hasn't been, there hasn't been an increase for fourteen years, and I know uh every one of the members of the city council don't do it for the money, obviously, you don't do it for the money.
Well, it's hardly makes up for the loss of.
Yeah, but uh, you know, there's a commitment to uh serving the the community and and so on, but yet compensation does play a part. Um but the most important part is serving the residents, um but. It is what it is, and uh.
Okay, and just, and for the record, this does not go into effect until after the next election, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so it's, somebody may not be here, so, you know? It's uh, it's, we're not doing this for ourselves, alright, uh, city clerk, you're on.
I think I actually need a um.
Need a motion.
Motion in this.
I thought we had that.
No.
Adopt the order?
Close the uh.
I thought we just did, alright, so we need a motion to adopt ordinance fifteen sixty-six.
Alright, I'll move it.
And Mr. Loa?
Uh, Corio.
Corio's gonna second that, thank you, sir, city clerk, I I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought we.
It's okay.
Got there.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen point two, public hearing and review of proposed resolution number CC twenty twenty-one dash zero five seven. For adoption, um, Mr. King, did you have something you wanted, or or Marie? Okay.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, fees are important to recovering the city's cost of deemed business. Um especially in the development impact and what it does to the future of our infrastructure and our community. We staff went through each of the individual's fees and evaluated every single one of them to determine the appropriate amount. Back in December of twenty nineteen, a fee study was brought forth to the city council for review. At that time, no action was taken, and then COVID hit, and so we decided, as the city and the council directed staff. That we wouldn't make any increases given the uncertainty of the economy. Now, um as we move forward in our two-year budget and the passage of Measure A V. We are making recommendations for you to consider increases in the fees that reflect the actual cost of providing the service. As well as CPI increases for fees that haven't been increased over the past few years. I wanna share a quick story with you because I think this really backs up how important our fees are to us. So yesterday, sitting with staff, um through the grapevine, we heard about a developer who came to the city of Palmdale. And our planning division staff gave them excellent customer service. This developer came in, was able to sit down with our staff face-to-face, get walked through the process very slowly. And answered any questions or concerns that they had about the process. When that developer left, they went to a surrounding city for the same um. Questions to see if they could develop in their city, they were met at the door with a piece of paper and told. Here you go, if you have any questions, just call us. This developer went around the community and told someone who told someone, and it came back to Palmdale. I couldn't be more proud to work for the city of Palmdale, we have really changed our image in the development community. Our customer service is top-notch, we have developers that constantly give us um. Compliments and kudos to our staff who actually take the time, work weekends and nights to provide. Service that you wouldn't find in any other city, especially in this economy right now. So when we're looking at these fees, we heard you loud and clear to balance the pendulum of. Being developer-friendly, but also making sure that the city is in good financial health. So when we looked at this, we looked at the survey around surrounding cities and what our rates compared to them. And we know that Palmdale is a gem, they want to come here, so let's not give away the farm, and let's get them to pay for what they're getting from us. So when you go through it, you'll see that building and safety fees are actually revamped. To be much easier to understand, and it follows best practices in the industry on how we charge those fees. We've also um looked at planning application fees and really realigned those to account for the amount of applications. That we are processing through the city, and lastly, parking penalties and fines have increased. To account for all the administrative costs that are going into um processing these fees and getting people to pay. We wanna deter them from breaking our laws or our uh codes and get them to pay and not do it again. We have our staff here to answer any questions you may have on any particular fees, and I just wanna really commend the staff. For working really hard and pushing for this, they really understand the importance of fees and what they mean to our city in the long term. And were very reasonable when they came out of the gate asking for these.
Alright, so I don't, so I don't end up getting messed up here and forgetting, I need a staff to read the full title of the resolution number CC twenty twenty-one dash zero five seven, please?
It's a public hearing to adopt resolution CC twenty twenty-one oh five seven, a resolution of the city of council of the city of Palmdale. Approving the Palmdale master fee schedule and repealing resolution number CC twenty twenty dash oh seven four.
Thank you, so we're gonna open the public hearing, IT, you have anything, sir? Okay, city clerk, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Murphy, you have anything that was, for the record?
Nope.
Okay, do we have anybody in the public uh, in the, in the audience that uh would like to address the council at this time? Going once, twice, okay, uh need a motion to close public hearing then.
So moved.
Mr. Loa?
There you go.
Mr. Corio? City clerk?
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoppar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments for the uh Marie at this time? Or a motion?
Oh, wait a minute, um. At first, I thought it was a simple three point six percent across-the-board increase tied to the CPI. But I had a uh a meeting with uh with you, Ms. Ricky, and with Mr. Heffernan, that was, gave me greater insight into into these things, but. It also raises more questions, and I haven't had the time to really read through this double-page sheet of permits. Um, I think you're trying to achieve this balance between recouping um. Funds that uh the community receives, or developers receive, or other uh entities receive from the city. Um and balance that against uh trying to be most attractive to um developers, potential um business interests. Potential um factories or manufacturers, industrialists. Um, I haven't been able to really digest all of this, but uh, you know, when I look at, for example. I saw it here a moment ago. If we wanted to attract, and I don't, I really don't know what the relative uh economies are of this particular thing, but a. Palmdale Building and Residential Code permit uh for a project over ten million dollars, and we certainly want to. Attract those things, brings a uh fee of seventy-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, which didn't exist before. So that's like a, an enormous increase for a project of that size, uh, I'm just picking something out. That seems to be one of the larger uh increases, so um. I just, I'm just wondering uh if.
That the building code or planning code?
It's the Palmdale Building and Residential Code Code Permit and Plan Check Fee.
The uh.
For a project of ten million or more, seventy-one thousand, that, we didn't have that before.
Right, and 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 pretty much everybody else has, uh that's a, uh that's a project, uh and they're telling us what's, what it's worth. So they wanna tell us it's twelve dollars, it's twelve dollars, I guess, you know, but uh the uh building and safety fees. Uh are, uh have been, and and also, I can tell you from the fire department side, same thing, um, the uh, the building codes essentially. Set what those numbers can be, uh and then uh, and then um, then it's up to the community what they, you know. But that's, that's. That type of fee, that's fairly standard in the industry.
Well, even three hundred, you know, for, everything from three hundred thousand up to over ten million, these fees did not exist before. Now they're being put in, um and I'm just wondering what the commensurate um. Uh in other words, is this, is this equivalent to uh what is generally charged by other cities and uh counties?
So Carina is gonna stand up and ask, answer.
Okay. In a hot seat.
So, one of the things that the staff report talked about, specific to the item.
One of the things that the staff report talked about specific to the item that you're discussing is that previously, we actually didn't offer categories for. Differences over three hundred thousand for our building permits. So unfortunately, a million square foot, two million square foot building. Well, actually, that's not applicable because we're talking about the over ten ten million square feet. Would have the same uh percentile that was factored in for a three hundred thousand dollar home for building valuation. So we have looked at neighboring jurisdictions and it is in line um with what they currently assess. A ten million uh building valuation is quite large, but. So you know, it's one in a million that we're gonna see something like that. The reason that we separated it out is to essentially make sure that we're not overcharging the single-family residential that's coming in. Um essentially, I have a breakdown here, so excuse me.
While you're there.
Sure.
See, that's exactly the complaint we were getting on residential builders, uh and from the people in the community, that they were propping up some of the bigger projects that. You know, their their fee was going for our our building guys and planning department stuff to handle. Stuff that they were paying a much lower uh.
Well.
Component of, so.
Okay, I mean, I wanna hear what you're saying a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what it essentially equates to is eight thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars plus seven dollars and fifty cents. For every thousand over a million. So when you break it down, I understand that the seventy-one thousand feels like a shocking number and the other ones aren't really broken down like that. Um but it was to provide a flat fee versus a percentile, which we do for the other ones.
Okay, um the problem is that I don't think there's any builder that's putting a product out there for less than three hundred thousand in Palmdale. And there were no, um and I'm, I could be wrong, but I I I know that the market is hot and uh. And I've seen a little bit of the product that's out there, but I I I haven't seen anything of a new product being less than three hundred thousand. And you start with these new fees at three hundred thousand. So when we talk about trying to be.
So that, oh, sorry.
You know, trying to um make sure that the that the that the residential developers. Uh aren't being impacted by this, i- it seems to me they are being impacted by this because we've created a a level. Of a fee that wasn't there before for the very people that that we just referred to.
So if I could actually offer a correction, so currently, we actually don't have anything over or under a hundred thousand. We're actually proposing to do zero to seven hundred, seven hundred to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. Fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand to a million, a million to ten million and over ten million. So the intention was to capture, we don't want one of our small businesses that would like to do a patio. Expansion to have to pay the same amount. That a hun- or that a hundred thousand or a three hundred thousand dollar project is gonna have to do. So we were trying to offer some additional categories to benefit the smaller companies that are coming in. So really, it was, we have three categories currently and we're adding an extensive amount.
Okay, is this something that uh staff discussed with B I A?
Yes.
And what was the, what was the interaction there?
Um they appreciated the fact that we were adding categories, um. There wasn't any pushback or any additional questions when we presented to the B I A on this item.
That, so they didn't oppose these?
No.
Okay.
And I think their lack of attendance tonight might also contribute to that. Yes, we did a full presentation myself, public works and the parks, um parks department.
And I I've had some interaction with a couple of those guys and with the uh biz fed folks and you know, uh. When we were proposing an art fee, they went nuts. I had not a word on this, not a peek.
Yeah, uh you know, and I, when I looked at the uh staff report and you know, um I just, I it it was kind of a um. I I looked at it, it's just maybe I misunderstood uh the import of this, but um it seemed like it was gonna be an across-the-board uh three point six percent increase. Some of these are, you know, much, much more than that, there's some that are less, some actually lower a little bit. Um and I know we're trying to recoup um, you know, these services that that we provide. Uh across the board and there's many, many categories, it's not just the building and safety and planning, there's a lot of other categories as well. Um I just haven't had sufficient time to digest all of this, but I know we had a presentation earlier several months ago about all this. I just don't know if I've, if I've, if I can um. Adequ- adequately vote on this measure without really studying this more. That's, that's just me speaking for myself. I don't know, is there any kind of, is there a time restriction on this? I mean, is this something that has to be done immediately or is this something we could uh take up in uh the first meeting in July?
You could take it up in first meeting of July, but these increases do affect our budget. Those were built in because we needed the revenue on the general fund side.
So that's already something that, we've already approved a budget, so that's key to end of that as well?
So there would be a shortfall and we'd have to go into reserves to cover the shortfall.
What are the, what's the amount of money we're talking about? Imagine that'd be hard to.
Yeah, it's difficult.
I would say probably somewhere between two million and three million dollars.
Two to three million?
Yeah. It's a, it's a wide range, but it's.
Roughly your three point five percent.
Yeah.
To the general fund.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we've had a lot of commentary back from the community over the years is that um. What the community gets concerned about is what they perceive as giving uh um. Using general fund revenues to pay for staff that's doing the work for this guy. And that's basically taking money away from them and I mean, we had, we had some contentious elections about. People need to pay their fair share along the way, so I mean, I think that uh, you know, I think we kinda gave them some direction on this.
So one more, one more item I would like to say, it's uh, uh Mr. Loa, you mentioned three point six percent increase. We since speak, uh we we have not increased the fee for three years, three plus years. So this is just merely a reflection of current uh C P I. So really, it's not really three point six percent, if you consider over the past three years, it's really a little over one percent.
No, no, I I I understand that, but it's just that the way it was presented in the in the staff report, I got the impression that that's all it was. And then when I look, when I dig deeper and I get this, this, the chief of papers, um it it obviously is more than that. But um, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put a shortfall in the budget for too, I don't wanna be responsible for that, but um.
Yeah, we we definitely don't wanna jam this thing up. I know there's a couple of issues we we talked about last time that were a little bit. Um more of a hot button issue. Uh one of them being the uh the appeal fees for planning commission, did those get addressed?
Yes.
And you're giving those away now, aren't you?
They're consistent with what was previously approved. We did not uh increase those or take a C P I.
Okay, right, cuz I know we had a, we had a fruitful discussion of. The increases that we concerned about last time and then I remember last time we didn't even increase them, right? We just let them stand as B for you guys to go back and reevaluate and then here we are now. So I know it's a lot to consume right now.
Yeah, see, that, I have a little bit of a problem, I mean, there's been time, uh again, I don't know when you finalize this report, Ms. Ricky. Uh with staff, it's complicat- it's complex and it's it's inclusive. Um you you know, it's across the board kind of a thing, but we, you know, I I got more detailed information when I met with you this afternoon, just hours before this meeting started. And then I'm expected to vote on increasing fees across the board. I feel really uncomfortable doing that. Uh but I don't wanna hold up the budget. You know, I think you're, I think I've been put in a tight spot. I mean, I want to be responsible as a member of council. That we're doing things uh with knowledge, fully informed, and sometimes that just doesn't happen. If. And and it's almost like, you know, we've got to take, and 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 I think that our staff is magnificent and trustworthy and and believable. But at the same time, our, our, we are here to counterbalance that, to make sure that we're moving forward um intelligently. And and if, tonight, I feel a little uncomfortable in with this particular item.
If we do move forward on this tonight, do we have an option uh to bring any of these particular items back? If you go through this and find that there's a few items or fees that you don't like, could we bring them back to council and have them reassessed individually?
Sure, we we we, you can always come back and and what I would say is, I think this presentation. And and these fees are different than the last time. Last time you guys were presented a fee schedule that was thicker than tonight's entire presentation.
You guys went back and painted it for sure.
And we listened to what this council has raised. Over specifically over the last eighteen months, right? And hopefully, when you dig in to the details, if you see something that really gives you hu- heartburn or you hear from a constituent that says, wait a minute, right? Then talk to staff, we'll get you the the backup documentation because to Karleen's point. To have a building inspector or have a project that has a a ten million dollar valuation or a a. Two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, we send staff out multiple times to Plan Forty-two to support those contractors who are doing work out there. Every week, they pay the same price as as somebody who is gonna do uh a much smaller job. That's the level of service we talk about and I can tell you that you're not gonna vote tonight on any fee. If that ink is increased, that will result across the board, that will be higher than the market. We are, we are still gonna be lower. There might be a one or two, but I think still will be lower than our neighboring neighboring cities, not just Lancaster, the neighboring cities. So what we try to do is listen that you want us to be competitive. You want us to be developer friendly, you want us to be business friendly, we're doing all those steps, but we're trying to right-size. So that we can continue to invest in staff, so that we can be responsive and hire, hire enough planners and building inspectors and code enforcement. So while you may uh not have had um the time and I and 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 I hear that loud and clear. We 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 can come back if if there are, as Austin said. Uh something that really gives you heartburn and if you're not satisfied with the justification, then we'll break back.
I know that we had a a lengthy presentation, which had been about nine to ten months ago or so, it's been several months. And and then it, then all of a sudden it fires up, right? I di- I didn't realize this was gonna come up. Um and I've been away, so I don't wanna burden the rest of the council or staff with that, but um. But it's almost like it it comes up, there's a lot involved and it's like um. You have to vote on something that you're getting information on here, very shortly, cuz I don't remember what what that staff discussion was, you know, I remember some of the broader picture of it. But some of the details that is now included here, on which we're now going to vote, uh is is uh is is a different issue to me.
May I just add that the fee schedule is actually adopted every year with a budget, so the council has to adopt the master fee schedule so that we can continue to charge it each year. For the past two years, we have not increased any fees at that point.
I know we have.
So we've fallen behind the curve. What it is, is it's kicking a can down the line for greater drastic significant increases should there any be sho- should there be any further shortfalls in the budget?
It's also, it's also part of the. The, that, that's one of the complaints that I do hear, is is that. We 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 need adequate staff to be able to get out there and handle these inspections, uh and these job walks. In a timely manner, cuz time is money to these guys. And uh uh that's been one of the issues, we also need to have an adequate amount of staff, which the, which the, which the schedule supports. To be able to handle the weekend and and uh in inspections and stuff because otherwise, these guys will be done on a Thursday. Uh maybe we don't have a guy now to to handle on a Friday, he's waiting till Monday or Tuesday then. So uh I think it's all about being able to provide adequate service to the constituents and to the businesses that are calling and and are looking for that service, so. Time is money to these guys and um they much rather have certainty than anything else, I think.
I wanted to address an additional thing there. You know, one of the other things that I've been most concerned with and and I've been talking to you now for quite a long time. Is development along Palmdale Boulevard, because we've got long stretches of property. Uh I've been told repeatedly that there's small projects, small uh owners and therefore difficult to deal with, but in fact, you have shown me. That there are large parcels that are owned by one, uh either an L L C or an individual or a family. And and I know that you've been reaching out, we've met about that. I don't want these fees, for example, if somebody wanted to do something uh on Palmdale Boulevard, which is something that we want to push and promote. Uh and now they're, they're, they're visited with a several thousand dollar uh impact fee to dissuade from doing that. It's, it it seems like it's almost counterproductive.
Can we bring something back on an infill, uh uh an infill, um uh.
I got one better.
Infill, infill project, uh 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 bonus or.
I got one better for you. I I can tell you that uh just this week, we heard back from, or last week, we heard back from Caltrans. On their Palmdale Boulevard project that was gonna have a bunch of gaps. Um they gave us the number, the number's probably somewhere between one point five and call it two million dollars. Staff is gonna be bringing forward uh. A proposal that we find the funding to pay for that gap, so their. The owners along Palmdale Boulevard, who do not currently have curb gutter and sidewalk, are gonna get it. Potentially, if this council approves it, that'll make, so just that cost alone, Richard, is. Uh they're gonna save hundreds of thousands of dollars as compared, so we could, without that knowledge. You could look at a fee and say, this fee could be, they'll trade that for curb gutter and sidewalk any day. So if we're gonna do that, I, you need to know that we're, we're trying to plan it to see where we can get that funding. So that we don't have somebody who is disabled that has to play Frogger across Palmdale Boulevard. Uh and and we heard that loud and clear from this council that you you want that complete.
We need that, we need that.
So we are.
We incentivize, that's the word I was looking for, to incentivize that infill development.
Right, so if we go in funds wi- in partnership with Caltrans, who's been a good partner. Curb gutter and sidewalk along all Palmdale Boulevard here, right?
Maybe that'll get us moving in the right direction.
We now just took a big burden off some of these developers. Uh that is gonna be far greater than than one of these fees. Um so.
Okay.
I, that's a extra thing, I know Karleen's sitting here uh chomping at the bit to.
I just wanna provide a little bit of uh a little bit more transparency and clarity. So previously, um when the time and motion study was conducted for building and safety specifically, it was a thirty percent increase across the board. Staff, when looking at these fees with finance, we felt like that was completely unreasonable. We actually in our fee resolution have forty reductions in fees from the building and safety side, so. We really tried to be mindful of encouraging development, thinking about our future, you know, partners and the community. And made incremental changes that could make a big difference for our community and still incentivize developers to come here, so. It was thoughtful and I I can sympathize with wanting to take some extra looks, but. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we did not just arbitrarily look at these numbers and throw them out to council.
Listen, I know that you're very responsible, all of you, um and 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 incredible, but we also have responsibility on our side. Um I I um, I heard a little thing from you, uh Ms. Saxton, that. Gave me a little bit of pause and that is uh that a million dollar project is one in a million. I want it to be much greater odds than that, in other words, let's start bringing the bigger projects and Palmdale Boulevard is ripe for that. And uh I hear what you're saying, that there's ways of 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 balancing that. So having listened to all of this, I mean, I think we can, we can go forward with it, but.
Can we, can we make sure though, we look at some incentivization? Is that the word? Uh for uh for infill. Uh because I I think that, you know, we're getting, there's bills at the state that are looking to try to do that. I think we're better off charting our own course on that, uh and uh having something in place and uh and then working. Uh you know, working with the owners and the industry out there to say that, hey, listen, we we've got the space, you've got the property. Yeah, you know, let's, let's work to 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 make this work for everybody, you know, so. I I would like to try to figure out a way to try to incentivize specifically that infill. Now, how you wanna define infill? Now, you get the big bucks to figure that out, okay? Define infill for me, that's the old deal, that I I know what it is when I look at it, you know?
And then we have a a sister entity, uh Palmdale School District, has a major piece of land on Palmdale Boulevard, I mean, we really need. And then we have a a sister entity, uh Palmdale School District has a major piece of land on Palmdale Boulevard, I mean, we really need to get that going. And uh so I'm hoping to see and hear good things.
Yeah, I think staff, I think staff knows that the with the flexibility we need on some of these areas that are empty. Building, empty building, empty space and more buildings, so yeah, I think they get the idea. I I appreciate the attention, the detail and coming back with a uh a much more moderate fee increases than what we saw last time. And uh here's a fee we can all agree on, uh illegal fireworks, dumping and graffiti, third fine, ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Problem is, it's never, the judges won't hold that, which sounds good, but we've really gotta get this guy some direction.
Well, don't say that.
Yeah, well, no, they all know it, are you kidding me? It's all over, like, get on Facebook, it's right there.
Well, for those who are listening, it's ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, so don't do it. Um, but yeah, if we can, you know, I appreciate uh Mr. Loa's concerns, but we can have time to look this over. But we can still pass it tonight. If there's anything that we feel is a discrepancy or needs to be looked over, we can bring it back.
Was that a motion approved then?
Yeah.
The other thing that that Ms. Ricky and uh Mr. Hefferman brought to my attention is that. Built into this is a flexibility in negotiating some of these fees. So that's also, it, you know, that's sort of a uh fail-safe kinda way to to do it, but. Um, my, what I'm expressing is a concern about having to vote on something on a limited amount of time to review the information. But anyway, I'm done, thank you.
Thanks.
And so I I did take the time to uh review the fees, I I read the staff report. And yeah, the the appeal fee came to my mind, uh thanks for bringing that up, Austin. And that's one of the things that I look for, and that's one question I have to agree to decide. I I fully understand the urgency in passing this fee resolution. Uh, because like I said, I am really in in can. Um, Kate, uh we we need to get this because it's part of the budget um. Process and and we we are looking at what those fees are gonna be. I look at the fees and I I do agree that even even now, some of the fees are still lower. Than other jurisdictions nearby. I I I'm in this profession, I look at fees uh many different places and I feel. Speed at our fees are still much lower than other other jurisdictions. Um, so again, I I understand the urgency uh to be concerned with Councilmember Loa had on this large parcel on Palmdale Boulevard. And the word incentivize that was used for these developers, that mechanism already exists, it's called a development agreement. Uh, and big developers tend to be attracted uh to these big parcels on Mayor Thufair, so like Palmdale Boulevard. And it's not unusual to have this type of mechanisms to attract these development. Um, I I like to hear that uh Caltrans is coming back, I actually think that we got a a memo sent out to 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 the council. Where the shortfall of one point five or ten million dollars, whatever that amount is that JJ mentioned. Uh, I see that also as moving in the right direction. Because that is, as I've said before, if we were able to control uh Palmdale Boulevard, I think that we will get more development. Uh, and a- again, it's it's part of that uh program to incentivize uh developers that are looking at uh. Big projects, as far as the 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 fees that you're concerned with, the the one million dollar, ten million dollar projects. Uh, again, even even looking at them, they're still lower than what other other jurisdictions have. And it's also putting in the level play field of, you know, I I wanna do a patio. Why should I pay the same amount when you have the aerospace industry asking for way many more inspections? Than building a patio, it's it's uh, I think that that's that's also fair. That those big developers, those that make millions of dollars in having a business in Palmdale. Uh, also pay the fair share of what the process is. And this comes back to uh having uh the 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 finances to pay for those new positions that you mentioned. The building inspectors, uh big developers, you know, to them time is money, they are willing to pay. Uh, even a special inspection on a Friday, we offer that to them because to them time is money. And again, I just wanna express that there are there are already mechanisms in place to entice that type of development that that you mentioned. Councilmember Loa, um so I think this is fair. Uh, however, there's one thing that I I like to ask the council to consider, and that has has to do with small businesses. CUPs for small businesses in the past were um maybe even less than half and that what they were for regular CUP. I understand it's the same amount of work, uh but the idea back then was to help the small businesses get their CUPs. So I think that the council, we should consider giving a. A a chance to those small business owners to be able to come up with seven thousand five hundred dollars for a CUP fee. I'm not saying that should be less, cuz I understand it's the same amount of work, but maybe coming up with a a a plan or a program. Uh, where these small businesses, whatever that criteria is for small business, be able to uh. Come up with a seven thousand five hundred dollars overtime, and that's just an idea you guys wanna consider. And maybe staff can come up with with a mechanism to allow small businesses, entrepreneurs. Uh, to be able to be part of this uh economics, again, because big, big restaurants, chains. They don't mind paying seven thousand five hundred dollars for a CUP, but when you have these small businesses that are struggling to. Open up a business and you tell them that they need to pay seven thousand five hundred dollars uh to submit an application. Uh, I think that that we need to, we need to consider that and and be able to offer them some sort of assistance. Uh, yeah, I'll just leave it at that, I understand this, the urgency of passing this fee resolution. Um, and again, the mechanisms to attract uh big developers are already in place.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a great point, we talked about the 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 burden that places on some of these small guys. Can you take a look at that, JJ, and see if there's a way be- you know, between uh Planning Department and uh and administrations? You guys can look at a mechanism s- somehow to uh uh. Um, you kinda take that the pressure off those guys for something like that?
Sure, I I I think one thing I'm thinking of off the bat is is working with Carleen's team in economic development. And trying to incentivize more small businesses, I mean, that's, that's what our drive is.
Yeah, exactly.
So when we talk about the chamber support and we talk about some of the American Rescue Funds, so maybe looking at. Uh, a grant program for small businesses that maybe employ a certain amount of people. Uh, that can get some sort of reduction, so we will look at that.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we hear you loud and clear, uh we don't want to uh disincentivize.
Right.
So play on your incentivize work.
Richard brought up the, you know, the the Palmdale Boulevard issues and we've talked about that uh quite a bit, as 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 Mr. Corio and uh. You know, the um, uh, and we have some parcels out there, yeah, we got some big ones out there, but there's a lot of little ones. And with the 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 economy of scale actually works for the bigger parcels. It's those little guys that you end up at the small parcel, just keep sitting there, so that's why I specifically use the term infill. So that's what it's like, infill is not forty acres, infill is fifty feet by a hundred and fifty feet, so.
Yeah, but those those large pieces of land, they're.
Yeah, but that I'm, yeah, we're gonna have a whole lot of, you know, uh dirt, narrow dirt lots if we don't figure out the the. Real infill, so, alright, so I think Mr. Bishop had made a motion. Uh, and uh Mr. Corio, was that a second of your your comment?
That's correct, this is second.
Okay, so uh we have Bishop and Corio. On this item and uh for staff recommendation to adopt CC twenty twenty one dash zero five seven, correct? City Clerk?
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number uh eighteen. Uh, City Attorney.
Thank you, we actually have Noel coming down the aisle now as we speak.
Uh, it's like a wedding. Oh, I got all the building inspectors leaving.
Uh, before you this evening is Resolution Number CC twenty twenty one zero six two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, increasing the vehicle allowance received by the mayor and city council members. Palmdale Municipal Code two point zero eight point zero seven zero authorizes the city council to receive a vouch of vehicle allowance. Um, and it it's a vehicle allowance at the end of each calendar month. And they get that allowance without the necessity of presenting an itemization or receipts or vouchers or other documentations. Uh, the vehicle allowance does need to be reasonably related to what is required for the performance of the city council members' public duties. Currently, the vehicle allowance is two hundred dollars per month. And that was established twenty years ago in two thousand and one and has not been changed since then. Um, before you this evening is an opportunity to evaluate the vehicle allowance. And determine what the appropriate amount for the vehicle allowance would be. And if the city council determines that five hundred dollars is reasonably related to what is required for the performance of the city council members' public duties. To adopt Resolution Number CC twenty twenty one dash zero six two. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, so the uh, uh the staff uh was uh making a uh. Making the recommendation at. Five, was it? Five hundred, sir?
Uh, to be clear, staff is not making a recommendation.
Right.
This is an opportunity for the city council to evaluate what they think is appropriate for their vehicle allowance.
Right.
In fact, really no one's better to assess what uh it takes to perform one's duties than the city council.
Right, well, I've heard that number bantered around, that's the only reason I asked, so.
Five hundred is in the staff report, so it's not just bantered around, we brought that forward in looking at other comparables.
Wrong word, I'm sorry.
No, no, uh but we didn't, uh to to Noel's point, we're. We think it's uh.
That's the amount that's proposed.
It's it's the amount that's proposed, it's the amount that uh specifically with four dollar gas and. Uh, the amount of miles traveled, the maintenance of the car, the insurance of the car, we think. Five hundred would be justable, justifiable, and we're ready to answer any questions you might have.
So the last time this was increased, uh the last time it actually was put in place was in two thousand and one, twenty years ago. And what's what's the rate of uh of inflation increases since two thousand and one now in New York?
I see Keith is over there typing.
Too many calculators here.
I'll defer to Keith on that that question.
If you think three percent per year, uh multiply by twenty years, that would be sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
Yeah, but that depends on how you look at it, uh but somewhere between sixty and eighty percent is.
Probably if you compound it, right? Look at that, now I'm now I'm using like finance terms.
Yeah.
I I will say that the vehicle allowance has been around se- since before then, the the last increase was in was in two thousand and one.
Okay.
Also, the the vehicle price uh increased quite a bit uh recently as well, so that's another factor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, is it, that the number that you guys are comfortable with, or so I'm gonna throw something else out or make a motion?
Seems completely just viable.
Yeah.
Alright, so is that a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, second.
Okay, a motion by Bishop, second by Mr. Loa, Mr. Corio, you're remote, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or are you good?
No, I I think it's a, it's a fair look at what uh the time that it's been since this was implemented. When it's been twenty years, I'm not sure what the the uh thought process was back then, but when you look at what two hundred dollars. Value was in the year two thousand or two thousand and one. Now, we're looking at twenty years where things have definitely changed. And the cost of li- life, the cost of living is has increased. Um, and I'm not, I'm, when I say cost of living, I'm I'm talking about gas prices. Uh, the cost of insurance and the maintenance of the vehicle and those kinda things. Um, I think it it's a fair assumption to go with what item number two is on the recommendation as it's been drafted.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have a second. Do you have any, anything else who wanted, any other comments or questions or anything? No? Okay, City Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafbauer?
Aye. Thank you, thank you Noel, thanks for all your uh hard work and the research on that.
The question gasoline in two thousand and one, average in the United States was a dollar fifty one in.
Two thousand and one.
Yeah, I think it's that much, I think that's what it is in Texas right now.
No, it's a little higher.
Sorry, alright, um, so we, that finishes it. Hey, I'd like to ask one thing before we adjourn here real quick. Uh, can we ask the City Attorney, I know we've been doing a lot of discussion about um these issues with arrest rates. Uh, and filing rates, and I'm getting a lot of calls from uh attorneys on both sides and and other. Uh, constituents, can you bring back something at the next meeting? So we can uh we can discuss the general topic and uh we'll figure out how we want to uh uh continue that that discussion? Because right right now, we're just kicking a can down the alley and uh I think everybody needs to have the same set of information.
Of course, we'll bring it at the uh July thirteen, is that our meeting, July thirteen?
The post.
We'll bring it back.
The the post-mirage meeting, okay, thank you, sir. Anything else from the council or we motion adjourn?
I do, I do have something uh for the council to consider, that um. I I I feel that staff needs to take a, take a break, a lot of uh staff's been going on, maybe working a lot and getting all these. Items to the council meetings, a lot of jurisdictions, they 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 call it going dark in August. Uh, and that's an opportunity for staff to take vacation too. Uh, I think that we, the council, need to consider giving staff a little bit of a break. And an opportunity for them to to take vacation in August. Um, that is just something that I I see valuable in staff, uh sometimes staff uh needs to get insanity. And and not not think about, you know, right now they're thinking about the next deadline for the next uh council meeting, uh for staff reports. Um, if you guys wanna consider that, I think that we ought to our staff.
JJ, how do we, how would we look if we were to uh um, cuz I know we adopted the schedule by ordinance, but I know the second meeting. Is a workshop. Um, uh, we, or can we handle what needs to be done if we um um. Forego the second meeting in August and that gives, that gives a three-week break?
Oh, w- we can, and and if we plan accordingly, if if the council's okay with that in terms of. Uh, you're you're talking about canceling a workshop, a scheduled workshop in August.
Yeah, that gives.
So let me, let me see, wh- without seeing the schedule.
Deadlines, I know you gotta talk.
Hold on.
Carleen waving.
Uh, but between Keith and Carleen, they're they're both talking from the uh audience a lot tonight, uh. They're they're. Okay, so uh.
So let's, let's look at that though and see if it's feasible and 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 you guys come back and tell us because.
So.
I I don't have a problem with it, we can take care of business, so.
And if uh if we have to do that in mid-August. Would the, based on Councilman Corio's uh comment, would we potentially consider? After the the meeting in July?
We can always adjourn to a different meeting date.
Adjourn to a different meeting date, so maybe we we get a a three-week break either way.
Yeah, take a look at the schedules, Carleen, we'll we'll crunch the numbers on on her, cuz I know she has some statutory deadlines to meet. Uh, but uh, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna make sure we get the business done because I know it's been a big issue with. Mr. Bishop as well, that we wanna make sure we're not making people wait for their business, so.
I would just say. We will take that, but before you ask for a motion to adjourn, I think we have to ask Keith for permission. Because he he's doing more talking from the front row there today.
Uh, the workshop in September, uh this is for debt service uh education. For all the council members as well as new staff members, so it's in September, so I'm okay with August.
Council, uh Ke- Ke- Keith has made the motion.
Also, before we leave tonight, I do wanna recognize one person that that came in tonight, uh David. This wave, David runs a a some, he's one of the um, uh he's been working with the county and with the nonprofits out there. And he's been one of the guys that's like out every single week out uh helping pick up trash. And he's got some um things that he's working on here in the community, so uh he warned me that he was gonna be here tonight and I'm sure I'll get a. A good critique on my meeting, so, but I just wanted to make sure everybody saw him, so you know if he shows up at the door, you know who he is, so.
Well.
David here, so, alright, anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.